You wouldn't put it together if you couldn't do it legally. I would ask the new board to write a letter to Senator Knight and to Senator Fox requesting that legislation be put in Sacramento to end this kind of lame duck policy or procedure of spending doling out tax dollars unnecessarily. You know, I ran for office because we need people that are going to change the way government is run. Instead, we have people that get in office and over time, they become part of the good old boy and girl network and these kind of things happen. It's not right. And I'm just speechless at this point. I'm very upset about how this is being handled. But I'd ask you to vote against this and let it go through a normal process. Thank you.
Can we have Steve Fox come forward, please? Good morning.
I received a constituent complaint yesterday that there was a $300,000 buyout, but rather than make an opinion, I thought I would take a look on the contract on the website. I have, and I met with your attorney earlier, and clearly I have as an attorney a different opinion than he does. He's looking at it as a three-year constantly rolling contract. The way I read it, which a number of other people appear to be reading it, is it started out to be a three-year contract and then it added one additional year after 2014 at the end of each December. Well, we're not in 2014. Clearly, we haven't even started one day into 2014. Therefore, you can't extend it past the December 31st of 2014 the way I read the contract, which would mean that you'd have 13 months left of the contract, which would mean that you're, if you do the buyout the way it's proposed, you would be adding an additional five months from 13 months to 18 months to the buyout, which would be approximately $100,000. If I am right in my interpretation, as apparently everybody else apparently agrees with me in the side of the room, then you're having a gift of public funds of $100,000. I don't know what the personal liability of each of you might be if that's the case, but I think you might want to consider airing in the side of caution, allowing the next board to research and get the data and make their decision. I worked very hard to get you additional $9 million as of January 1st of this year through the different language and the different components to apply for our 30. I would hate to see any of the hard-earned tax dollars used for a gift of public funds we've worked so hard to help our students. My advice is that you defer to the next board, allow them to get the information, allow them to get an additional legal opinion. But again, my interpretation is based on what I see as the clear, plain language in the section that says this contract ends December 31st, 2014, and then at the end of each year, there's a one-year extension. I see the one-year extension as connected to 2014. Nowhere in there does it say this is a rolling contract of three years each time. It says it's basically implies it's a rolling contract of one year. That's my claim, my clear interpretation. That appears to be others. I would suggest and urge the board to air in the side of caution and allow the next board to consider making it. Thank you.
Thank you. Can we have Nick Napolitano come forward also?
Good morning. I'm here as a taxpayer, property owner, in the city of Palmdale. And first of all, I would like to second every person that has preceded me.
Did you say Quartz Hill or Palmdale?
I live in Quartz Hill now.
Okay.
But I still own property in Palmdale and I pay taxes here. Some of my taxes end up here in this boardroom. I too am not an attorney, but I read on the computer last night, I read the contract, I read your proposal, and I too have the exact same question as Mr. Fox had. How can you go beyond the timeframe? I am a retired LA County employee. When I resigned my position, I was entitled to vacation leave on the books, sick leave on the books, no additional pay. And I'm wondering why we're giving Mr. Galizi all this extra money when he's already making pretty much what our state governor makes? So I second everyone, and I wish that you would defer to the new board, allow them to get more facts and perhaps maybe get a better legal opinion, too. Thank you.
Thank you. It's now closed. Do we need a motion to close public? No. So before Mr. Verge comes forward or begins his presentation, the public should know that this is the third time that the board has met to discuss what happens to our leadership in the Pondell School District after Mr. Galizi announced his extended sick leave. We have discussed this item in close session twice. This is the first time that we have that opportunity to speak before the public and get your input. So this is done in full compliance of the Brown Act, properly noticed, and we are ready to have some answers, a little clarification from our attorney, so that the public has some clarification on some of the issues that have been raised. So Mr. Verge, will you start your presentation and certainly paying great attention to the whole question about the contract and when it was extended and when it expires technically and all that other information?
Sure. I don't have a presentation to make. I can provide you with facts and the law, and this is a decision for the board to make and as we've talked about. But the issue of, let's start with the issue of the term of the contract, which perhaps appears to be the most controversial, but I think is probably the most clear. The original contract that superintendent had started in July of 2007 and at that time was a three-year contract. One year into that contract, the contract was amended for the first time to add evergreen language, which made clear that at the end of that first year, if the superintendent had a positive evaluation, there would be another year added onto the contract. At the time that language was ended, there were two years on the contract that extended it another year to make for a three-year contract. And that's paragraph one of the first addendum to superintendent's contract. Where it said is at the end of each contract year, and there are three contract years, of course, in the three-year contracts, providing the superintendent's annual performance evaluation by the governing board is satisfactory, the contract shall be extended for an additional year. So at the end of the first contract year, if there's a positive evaluation, it's extended for an additional contract year, which would make for a three-year contract. The intent in doing that and the board's discussion in doing that was to assure that the superintendent had an evergreen contract, a three-year contract, as long as he had a positive evaluation. This is not an unusual provision. It's a provision that occurs in other contracts for other superintendents in other districts and for other, in other employment contracts. So the superintendent has operated since 2007 with a three-year contract. Starting in 2008, when he was finishing the first year of that three-year contract, the evergreen language was added so that as long as he had adequate or satisfactory performance evaluation, that would add another year onto the contract. That brings us up to 2011 where a change was made to the contract with respect to the term that that contract covered each year, so that instead of being a July 1 to June 30 contract, it became a January 1 to December 31 contract. So that change said the contract year currently runs from July 1 to June 30 with a current contract termination date of June 30, 2014. That's what happened going into that addendum. So as of November of 2011, superintendent had a contract that he was in the first year of that was going to go through June 30 of 2014. The contract language was changed so that it went from January 1 to December 31, and so it's, the language was added that said effective immediately, the contract year shall be adjusted so that it runs January 1 through December 31. And based upon superintendent's 2011 performance evaluation and a recognition of his performance, the contract shall be extended through December 31, 2014. So with that language, he had a three-year contract extending going from January of 2011 through December 31 of 2014. The language was then added that said at the end of each contract year, which is the same language we had to start with, at the end of each contract year, if the superintendent has a positive evaluation, then the contract shall be extended for an additional year. So at the end of the 2012 contract year, when the superintendent had a positive performance evaluation, it was extended for an additional year. I understand that there appears to be some confusion with respect to this language, that the thought that it would mean that after the, at the end of the December 30, 2014, which was the term going into that, it would be extended for an additional year if the superintendent had a positive evaluation. Problem with that is it doesn't read what the language, specific language of the contract says, which says at the end of each contract year. In 2011, when this addendum was added, it created a three-year contract from January 1 through December 31 of 2014, and there were three contract years of that year. And each year, the superintendent was to be evaluated. And then the language says at the end of each contract year, which refers to the previous sentence that says that the superintendent's contract is extended to December 31, 2014, therefore would create three contract years. So at the end of each contract year, the superintendent had a positive evaluation and it was extended for an additional year. He has not been evaluated yet for this year, and the board may or may not do that depending on what action it takes. And therefore, right now, he is in the first year of a three-year contract which ends on December 31, 2015. Therefore, there is the more than 18 months obviously involved in the contract. And that is, that is what was intended with this language in the negotiation with the superintendent for this. The language is clear because it says at the end of each contract year, if it, if you interpreted it to say that at the end of 2014, you would add on an additional year, which is the way I'm understanding some people would read it, that wouldn't make, that it wouldn't make sense to say at the end of each contract year, it would say at the end of the term of the contract, at the end of 2014, if there's a positive evaluation, it gets extended for an additional year. That's not what the language says. This is not new information. This is how the superintendent's contract has read since the first addendum that was added in 2008, and it has been a practice of extending his contract with additional year each year if a positive evaluation is provided. So that deals with the term issue that you asked about.
So before you move on to the next item, Mr. Verge, how long have you been consulting with the Pondell School District?
How long have I been counsel to the district? I think about 26 years.
So you have, this is not your first superintendent contract or agreement?
No.
Is it typical that those agreements or those contracts are for a three-year period? Does the superintendent sign up for a one-year term only?
No, it's typical that superintendent contracts at Palmdale and at other school districts are for three years. They can be for two or three, but they're usually for three.
So in the past, this has been a standard practice, a three-year term?
A three-year contract is a standard practice. The second issue that I addressed was the issue of the whole harmless language. I just want to make sure that it's clear that this whole harmless language is reflective only of really what the law requires. If a superintendent engages in, if action is taken against a school district or a board or superintendent based upon conduct that occurred in the course and scope of his or her employment, and as long as they were acting in the course and scope of their employment and weren't acting outside the course and scope of their employment or engaged in gross malfeasance or gross misconduct such that they weren't acting within their job, then there is indemnification already. So this is reflective of what the language of the law sets forth, basically. And so all the, the whole harmless language or the indemnification language says is if the district is sued or the board and the former superintendent are sued and the activity that's at issue is activity that he engaged in in the course and scope of his employment and did not constitute, it was carried out in good faith, that's what the language says, and without gross malfeasance, then the board or the district will provide indemnification. So that's not anything unusual either. That is a usual and customary concept and one that is embedded in law, that if a public official is acting in the course and scope of their employment, a superintendent, a board member, an assistant superintendent, a teacher, and they were acting in the course and scope of their employment, then that would be something that would be, they would be indemnified for and they would be defended. If they're not acting in the course and scope of their employment, if they were not engaged in good faith or engaged in gross malfeasance, then this language wouldn't apply. So I want to make, that issue wasn't asked or raised. Getting back to the agreement itself, and I'm not offering any opinion as to whether or not the board should do this or not do this. That's not my job. My job is simply to provide you with a legal analysis of what can or could not be done and the facts surrounding it. But some facts, I guess, that could help you and the public and the board understand. Here we have a superintendent who has, is in the first year of a three-year contract. So he's about halfway through the first year. He's got two and a half years left on his contract. This superintendent is on a medical leave, currently out until February 21. Don't know if that will be extended or not, because I'm not a clairvoyant, I don't know. But he has accumulated substantial illness time. He needs to be out on medical leave and there's, he appears to have medical conditions that could necessitate that. And also is entitled under the education code to other leave rights that could extend this leave as far as into, I think it's May of 2015, if all his leave were taken, if he needed to take that leave at that time. And you'd be required to pay him for that leave during that period of time if he has a medical reason to be out. If not, then he has return rights as soon as the superintendent, Galizi, is medically able to return and is released, then he has a right to return to his job. And so if that, if that happens on February 21, when he's released from his medical leave, he would become, that's why you have an interim superintendent, you don't have a permanent replacement if you will. In the meantime, you have elected as a board to have an interim superintendent run the district, which makes perfect sense, but you are paying for an interim superintendent and paying for a superintendent who's on leave. So you have that expense of the interim superintendent and the superintendent on leave. For how long that occurs, we don't know. It would depend on when Mr. Galizi came back, when he was released by his doctor to return. You have essentially a choice. One is to do nothing and wait and see if Superintendent Galizi is able to return and when he's able to return and continue to pay two salaries during that period of time. And at some point, I would imagine if that stands on for any length of time, you're also going to have to hire an interim assistant superintendent of personnel, human resources, because Ms. Lynn Bush is taking on the position of superintendent and right now is covering both, but I expect that can't be done for a definite period of time, which would add to the cost of this. So you could, you have a right to do that. And by the way, Superintendent Galizi has every right to do that as well. Or as an alternative, you could try to reach a resolution with the superintendent that allows for a reduction of that potential costs and the replacement with a more permanent leadership going forward because you don't know, because of the uncertainty when the superintendent will return.
So Mr. Verge, are you saying that for the next year and a half until May 2015, we potentially have this vacuum of leadership and instability and uncertainty here in our district and hovering like this cloud of uncertainty for that length of time if he doesn't return?
All I'm saying is that superintendent has illness leave and potentially industrial illness leave and differential pay that he's entitled to. And if he needs to be out medically during that period, he'll be out during that period and you will continue to pay his compensation and you will have to do whatever you, the board, whoever the board is, will have to do whatever the board's going to do with respect to the fact that he is no longer here. And during that period, if he's released to return, he would return.
So if we do nothing, so to speak?
Okay. Do you want to take a motion right now so that we can continue this session? Okay, so the comment that was made was that in order for the board to deliberate and have further discussion with Mr. Verge, including other board members, then we need a motion on the floor here so that we can have the discussion portion of this segment. So, board members, can I have a motion on item 6A? We have a motion in a second for discussion's sake. So Mr. Bynum, why don't you go ahead and continue your question?
Thank you, Mr. Bynum. So if in fact Mr. Galizi was to, and it's verified that he's out until May of 2015, and we haven't picked a superintendent in, let's say, over six months, seven months, that's a half a billion dollars that we could have saved by being able to make a decision on this, and not having to spend that amount of money on an additional superintendent because they're all making over $100,000.
Well, if Mr. Galizi is out during that period of time and you continue to have an interim superintendent and potentially hire a assistant superintendent of human resources, then there are significant additional costs of double paying for the superintendent job during that period. There is obviously, which would be the economic reason for trying to reach a resolution with respect to that issue.
So in your mind, a delay could actually cost the district a lot more money in the long run?
Well, it could, Mr. Bynum, but it also could not. I mean, if Mr. Galizi comes back on February 21st, it'll cost you what it cost until February 21st.
But that would be the only option other than making some kind of a resolution or some kind of an arrangement, some kind of negotiation.
You could reach an agreement with the superintendent that ends his employment for a specified amount of money and then does away with the potentiality that he could be on leave for that extended period of time where you are paying him his compensation and also paying an interim superintendent. Or you could not and wait and see what happens?
Well, as a story of the district, I'm looking, you know, at our fiduciary responsibility and how we can amicably get through this without it costing the district a lot of money. Obviously, anyone who's served the amount of time that Mr. Galizi has served in the different capacities have a love for education and, you know, this transition has to be hard on him as well as, you know, others. So we want to make sure that, you know, I'm the type of guy, I'm right down the middle, kind of fair. Let's be fair to our superintendent, let's be fair to the district. But as a board member, I have to look at the fiduciary responsibilities of this district prior to anything else, and I'm just worried about the cost factor if the decision is not made, you know, where it could lead to. And possible the fact that, you know, Mr. Galizi may decide, you know what, I'm physically able to come back and I want to come back, you know? And what kind of scenario would that play out in the long run, long run financially, you know, as we move forward with the new board? So those are my concerns.
I think you're right, Mr. Bynum. You know, being fair to the taxpayer, I think, is especially crucial. So for me, this is not an emotional decision, it's an economic one. It's what is best for this school district, not what is best for one person. We all need to know that the campaign is over. So we have, as board members, we have a responsibility fiduciarily and otherwise to make sure that this district is strong and that we don't have that absence of leadership, that uncertainty and instability really bothers me, I don't mind telling you. Just last month, we had a presentation made by Ms. Shepherd where she reported that a bank had approached our school district because our finances were so strong, our organization was so strong, that they were looking for a different way to finance repairs, modernization, construction. That says a lot about our district. That is not the scenario or case today. And I worry that if we have a year and a half of instability in leadership, that that is going to have a detrimental effect on our finances and the way that our district is viewed through the financial prism and otherwise. So I do want to follow up, Mr. Verge, you had mentioned sick leave, but what are some other scenarios in terms of, you mentioned we have an option to not do anything and to just let this permanent or extended sick leave play out? What is another option for this board to consider?
Well, under the superintendent's contract, as I said, he has two and a half years left essentially on the contract that he has. He also has a provision in the contract that allows the board unilaterally, without his agreement, to end his employment without cause and pay him 18 months' pay and end his contract. That is a provision that's written into his contract. It is also statutory that you cannot pay more than 18 months' pay to a departing superintendent. So you can't, if you wanted to, you couldn't pay him for the entire two and a half years that he has left on his contract. The only other scenario other than, the scenarios are to wait and see if Mr. Galizi comes back, to end his contract and pay him 18 months' pay, which is what you'd need to pay him under the contract to do that, and that is the most you could pay. Or if there were some movement by the board to terminate him for cause, you could initiate the termination for cause, that requires gross malfeasance, gross misconduct, and, you know, I don't, I don't know that there is or isn't anything like that. I have not been asked that question, because you're asking what the scenarios are. Either he stays superintendent for the term of his agreement and is out on medical leave, and you cannot terminate the superintendent simply because he's on medical leave, of course, because that would violate the law, that'd violate the Americans with Disabilities Act and California law. So he stays superintendent while he's on medical leave and then comes back when he's finished, finish out the duration of his contract. You buy out his contract for the 18 months or some other amount, if you could negotiate some other amount, or you initiate termination for cause. Those would be your three choices. But if this board could do nothing and just sit and wait?
Okay, so if Mr. Galizi was to come back after February 21st, well, let's say, let's say May in 2015, okay, he comes back, he says, you know what, I'm feeling fine, I'm ready to step back in prior to his, you know, his time expiring, and his doctor releases him to come back. What would the board's position be then at that timeframe? As far as, could they then, maybe you're not going to call, maybe you're not going to have for cause, but the board decides, you know what, we just want to end the relationship? That would still have to be negotiated, that we could be at a higher figure at that time?
You would, no. The...
Well, I'm just thinking that maybe we wouldn't be in a good position.
Let me ask you a question, which is whenever Mr. Galizi returns, if he returns, he would have the remainder of the time left on his contract. There's been no evaluation of him for this year yet, so if he receives a positive evaluation this year, there'll be another year extended to his contract, which would take it out even further. If there is no positive evaluation this year, then his contract will not go on beyond that date, and the time that he'll have left when he returns is the time that's left on his contract. So if he returned with two months left on his contract, you wouldn't have to pay him out 18 months, you'd have to pay him out for two months. But it's, you know, the period of time when he is out is the end. But it's, you know, the period of time when he is out is the unknown.
Right, obviously. But that was just my, just my words, just...
I think the specter of paying two salaries for that amount of time is a gross injustice to the taxpayer. I think, I, again, I return to the uncertainty and instability that causes our entire school district from every facet of its fiber. I'm not inclined to do nothing or just wait this out. I think that instability is not good for our district. And, you know what, let's be clear and, and very specific about this issue. For me, and I think, I heard Mr. Vergey reiterate this, the most clear, the most clear item that is being discussed this morning is the term of the contract. This is the first year in a three-year contract. Let there not be any question in anyone's mind that that's exactly what is on paper. Not only is the superintendent's original contract online for everyone to see for many years now, but that includes every single addendum. If someone has a different interpretation, that's one thing, but we have legal counsel before us, and for the last several years, that has told us that that's exactly the case. So let, let that not be a question that is hovering out there, that there's any doubt that this is the first year in a three-year contract.
I would, the only thing I would add, the language, I believe, is absolutely clear for the reasons that I've identified, which are that it creates, the, the language of the addendum creates a three-year contract through December 2014, and which therefore has three contract years. And that says, at the end of each contract year, if there's a positive evaluation, then another year is added. But beyond that, it's my understanding in, as being counsel to the board and dealing with the superintendent on behalf of the board with these issues, that it's been the board's intent all along and the superintendent's intent all along to have this be an evergreen contract for three years. So to the extent there was any ambiguity, which I do not believe there exists here, the intent of the parties was absolutely clear. And, you know, as counsel to the board, my direction in putting this language together was to negotiate an evergreen provision provided for a three-year contract.
Mr. Vergey, I have a question for, for, just for clarification. If the board were to terminate with or without cause while Mr. Golicci was out on medical leave, would that potentially trigger litigation against the district that he alleged that the district was, was terminating him for being out on a medical leave? And if you could do that, what would be the potential cost of, of that litigation to the district?
Well, as your counsel, I'm glad to give you legal advice in public session, quite frankly, it's an attorney-client privileged situation, so I'll answer that in a more generic way, which is if an employee is out on medical leave and that is terminated while they're on medical leave, the burden is essentially, the, the employer is going to need to be able to demonstrate that there was a basis, the base, the reason for that termination was something other than the employee's medical condition. Otherwise, they are facing potential litigation for discriminating against someone based upon their medical condition. One of the things the courts look at in determining whether or not the motivation was disability or not is the proximity of time, whether the individual was on medical leave, how long they've been on medical leave, that sort of thing. So there, there would need to be a very well researched, articulated, and demonstrably provable reason for terminating the superintendent for cause, if that was the way you were going to go. And frankly, if you did it just for the 18 months' pay without, and did it without cause, the employee would have the ability to say, that was a subterfuge for terminating me because of my medical condition. Whether or not, how that would play out here, I have no idea. And I wouldn't, wouldn't want to opine on that, but that certainly could happen. And litigation of that sort is obviously very costly, hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars.
But I think something, and this is just a comment that you, something I don't think anybody's brought up at this point, the turmoil over the last few months has been, has done substantial damage to this district. Teachers, everybody in the district, not just the teachers. And I think, I think the board is entitled to a fresh start. I think they're entitled to a clean start. I think they're entitled to a start where they don't have to be concerned about the politics that have been going on for the last few months. And, and I think that they, they should be able to carry the business of the district on, carry on the concern about kids, and not worry about these issues that have been happening over the last three months and continue them out into a year or two. I think they're entitled to a clean start, and, and so is this district.
I just want to say, because I do recognize the work that Mr. Golicci has done in this district, including spearheading the dual immersion programs in this district, I was ready to just close this chapter in Palmdale School District history and move forward, start with a clean slate, so we can begin the healing that we all so much need, like Mr. Farron's, that I think we've had a lot of turmoil these past few months. But I'm going to be absolutely honest with everyone, I do have some concerns in regards to the interpretation of the contract. And as much as I respect you, Mr. Vergey, I also respect Mr. Steve Fox, Assemblyman Steve Fox, and I, I have some concerns, and I could ask, you know, my colleagues here to consider waiting and getting another opinion, but I know that's not going to do me any good. But I do want to express my concern, because if we are, at the end of the day, giving an extra $100,000 to Mr. Golicci, the community's not going to be happy. This is taxpayer dollars. So I know that was one of the concerns that was brought up. So my question to you then, as general as possible, what liability, if any, would we have as a board if we move forward with this and someone wants to come back and say, you know, there's a different interpretation of the contract, it was taken into court of law? I mean, obviously, everything hypothetical, but just wondering.
Well, there is no question that if there is less than 18 months on Mr. Golicci's contract, you cannot by statute or by the terms of the contract give him 18 months' pay. So if you gave him 18 months' pay and there wasn't 18 months on the contract, or, then you would have violated the statute. And essentially, what would happen is that that agreement would be null and void, or it would be null to the extent that it extended beyond the, the amount of time that was left on the contract. So that's, that's the answer to that, the board, the, the board and Mr. Golicci would have known one that, that was the case, because then it wouldn't be in the course of the contract.
Thank you, Pat.
So as the board's legal counsel, maybe I better not. Well, what I was looking at was, you know, I keep this extra money, this public funds. I wanted to know where this public funds money is coming from, because based on what I know, everything has been earned and has been entitled to under ED Code and under the contract. So, you know, are we talking about those extra few months adding on $100,000? I just want to make it clear.
I think, I think what counsel was referring to and what you're referring to is the concept of a gift to public funds. And it is a violation of the law in California for a public entity to give away public funds. And so if there's no basis for giving those, that is called a gift to public funds, and you can't do that. So you couldn't simply write a check to me, Mr. Golicci, or anybody else for $18,000 and not violate the law for, there's no basis for that. This 18 months' pay, if you were to provide it to Mr. Golicci, is a contractual agreement that you would be, you would be receiving a benefit for as a district in exchange for that payment. The benefits you would be receiving is relief from continuing Mr. Golicci's employment through the terminus agreement, and also because this includes a release, a release of any claims that he may have against the board, whether they afford anything related to his medical condition or anything like that. And the ability to move forward as a district, those would be the benefits you would be receiving. That would not be a gift to public funds if you provided those funds as long as there was at least 18 months left on his contract.